Okay, if there's no objection, I don't see anybody left in the waiting room. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great. You can unmute yourselves if you choose, or I can unmute you. But just remember, if you're gonna speak, you have to unmute before you start. And I want to thank all of you for your time. I don't want to waste it, so let's get started. I apologize. I had some notes from the last meeting, but not a lot. And Sean was supposed to, he may have said something else, but I don't seem to see it. For minutes from the last meeting as well.
One minute if they help you since we're the chair.
Okay, thank you. And this was sent to everybody?
I got this.
Okay.
My notes, just exactly what was said. I didn't put any commentary on it.
Alright, but basically, there was, and I apologize also, there was some confusion about a group email from the law department. All this is kind of new to me as well. Somebody sent out, one of the lawyers sent out something that we should not be responding all, reply all to the emails. It constitutes a discussion of a large group, but you guys are not, I haven't gotten a chance to get hold to the law department to figure out why that would apply to this group. Because you're just an advisory party of group. You're making, we're having discussions to make a recommendation back to the committee of the body of the whole that would actually do the work, so you're not like a policymaking body in a traditional sense. But I don't think there's any restriction even among counselors. Well, this is a one-to-one conversation. It only gets into an issue when we have large exchanges. And I do apologize, but the relationship with the law department and trying to get rulings on things like this. I had the same problem earlier, last, late last week relating to dog hearings, the same type of thing where. But anyway, I apologize to that. And would you like to do? Sure. She's.
These are my notes that I sent out. It's unadulterated, just what came up during the discussion. I came in a little late. I stepped in on a person who was talking about studio, having studio interviews with local groups working on workforce development as a resource and providing it as a resource to the community and or city council. And then that was taken to the idea of having local groups with work experience and program experience on workforce development and labor come together to give presentations on their work and share ideas, perhaps a symposium that is made available to the public. Then there was an idea of resource fairs for residents to learn about uninterrupted or permanent job opportunities. There's an idea to focus on upcoming industries like tech foundry or clean energy and having a hiring event for future jobs like AI coding and machine winding. Creating a resource guide for those working to link youth with job opportunities was mentioned. A mentoring program or training for parents and guardians for mentoring youth, helping them to connect with job opportunities. Promotion of UMCW bus drivers training and local industries looking for workers, for example freight. Promotion of local startup opportunities. Reusing or renovating abandoned property in the city. Endorsing or highlighting the need for better labor conditions of city workers. Marketing the city to prospective employers, addressing negative perceptions of the city, developing positive aspects of the city. Checking to see what do employers look for and locating work sites. Systemic changes to increase the use of local contractors. Then there was a suggestion by a member to create a chat group for the work group and city counselor Melvin provided his cell number. So I know there was discussion in between those things, but those were the different ideas thrown out and giving the open, open meeting law. I didn't want to put anybody's decision or moving around or comments on the different topics that were thrown out. So there you have it.
That was great. Thank you. And actually, that was very general and I don't think I'd violate anybody's definitions of open meeting laws and things of that nature. This committee is for you guys to kind of figure out, hash out suggestions that would be brought back. I had a conversation, I had the pleasure of going down to Boston today, myself, Asia, and the president Letterman, who was the architect of this organization. And he reiterated that the purpose is for you guys to just to come up with ideals, not necessarily have to be the actual complete blueprint of what you think should happen. But general ideals is the job of the committee of the whole, once your presentation is brought back to them to figure out the legalese, the functionality of whatever you're suggesting, the ability to fund it and to implement whatever you suggest. So I'm kind of hoping that I can kind of step back and just be more of a moderator and let you guys kind of talk about what you think needs to be or what, you know, maybe hopefully maybe today we could get one or two concrete things that that finally port of six, seven, eight things was, was the top number thing that we would want on that. So that, and it's pretty small group, pretty open mind, open and, you know. So you're all adults, you know, so everybody, there's no tension here and things. So ladies, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
This is Chris Eckneedy. Hi, I'll start it off. I, I've been thinking about what we've been talking about and I thought we might want to consider. For me personally, I think marketing is important. I mean, why don't people think Springfield right away when they think of where to put their, their business in? So maybe marketing would be important, but also reading in the papers, it seems like most of the energy jobs in this country are in this new clean energy field. And we've got Western Massachusetts has that, what someone else mentioned, the one who mentioned about maybe we should create a chat group. That lady who seems more scientifically oriented. That maybe we want to, might want to dovetail marketing with these newer industries, maybe target marketing to people like the people who do the, I don't know, the machine winding and there were some other ideas, green energy and those sort of newer green industry that, that it isn't settled. There's not one part of the state that's got it yet. So I was thinking maybe Springfield could jump on that. Just a thought.
Anybody have anything to add? Comment, suggestion?
Oh, sorry. And my apologies for not being there in person and camera off. It's having some childcare issues. But I liked the suggestion that was raised. I missed the last meeting, but that was talked about in the minutes of organizing some community events to be able to spread the word more about jobs and job opportunities that are out there. I think, so I, I'm in the construction industry and we have apprenticeship programs. And just getting the word out about how these programs work and what they are. We'd love to be a part of things like that. And I'm sure that's the case for other industries as well.
Great point, Lisa. Hey, Steve here. Good to see everybody. So I, I work for the Cannabis Control Commission and I help, assist in managing the social therapy program. So we offer technical assistance and training that covers a lot of stuff, you know, how to run a business, how to write a business plan. And everything you need to open and sustain a business in the cannabis industry. My thinking is obviously make it more broad for the city of Springfield, but could we implement that to target, you know, our workforce within the city to get them trained in the fields that, you know, that we might think of or that are, that are emerging, you know, like the green energy field, the cannabis field, both types of things. So my two thoughts.
Absolutely. Okay, so I was, this is Tammy, and I was also thinking what Lisa just brought up. Like looking at ways of how you, we can, because each of you have your businesses. We are a union organizer. We do our work with our PCAs. And just like maybe, you know, there's a ton of events that is happening throughout the summer. We're gonna have people going back to work, looking, people out looking for work. And I was just wondering if it's possible, if maybe we could look at different events that are happening out here in Springfield and maybe attend the event, bring in the literature from here so that people are saying, okay, this is a job that I'm, that I might like to do, but really pushing it out there. So, and we know that every time we come out there in the summer, there's everyone just laying, you know, laying on a ground at the table to find out what's happening, but leaving material at different places. I know that there's some, you know, there's a lot of people looking for work. They just don't know what to do, but the, and people don't have access to maybe like computers or how to really get the information that they need. So I was just thinking about that, maybe getting into some outside events in, in our cities here and just like putting lit, having a table for our team and just putting the information there. You know, and people can just talk to you about it, just get more information, in-person information. So it was just something that I was thinking about because I start to do, support different community events, like I know that progressive churches having, in July, they're having a special out at the table, helping with food. And they're gonna have different events happening out there, you know, giving, doing, passing out food. We're looking for volunteers. So I'm gonna go out there and volunteer with them and help out. They'll do the clothing that they'll be giving out to residents who need. Also, you know, clothes that people may be looking to go back to work. So this is gonna be happening in that progressive. She forgot to give me the date on Sunday at church, so I'm trying to get the date, but I'll share that. But just really looking, when people are out there looking for something, looking for change, like I got two that continues to look for change. But then I don't have the full information in my hand. So that would be for, good for me to get it myself, so I can share, because all of you do amazing work. And there's people down here willing to change. Someone want to get out of the healthcare field, somebody want to do carpentry, they people want to do building. And I think information like this for us to come at a table at an event out here in the Springfield area would be good. So we can pass the information, doing it in person. So it was just something I was thinking about. So it's whatever we think as a team. It was just something that was coming up to me as we start to look at the workforce, people graduating from high school, really trying to figure out what they want to do from those that are not going into the service, going into the medical field, but still looking for work. So that was just something I was thinking about.
Yeah, I agree with the marketing piece. I think that's important and then also connecting our youth and attracting folks to Springfield for jobs. Because there's, there's tons of jobs in Springfield, but I think we need to focus on the marketing piece and how do we connect with the youth that are here, but also bringing other folks into the city.
Okay. Tammy, and what you described in terms of what's going on coming up in the near future, I don't think that there's nothing that recludes the members of this committee to organize or do anything that they wanted to do around attendance at these events. This committee and the purpose of this was for us to come up with some ideals that could be put on a sheet and as a form to present back to the committee, the hall, hall, committee of the whole for future. So in January first, new council comes in, possibly a new mayor comes in, the same mayor as the air, either whatever that part of the leadership is with administration regarding is, would be hashed out and implemented. So to what Tammy was describing, this is like upcoming events. You guys are all individuals. You all have great ideals and time and manage your own time. There's nothing recludes you guys from sharing the resources that you have access to, to do that moving forward. And Greg Ellery is not here tonight, but when Greg and I have talked, he kind of echoed similarly to what Tammy just said. It was, you know, Greg has a history of trying to organize these type of workforce development type events where he's inviting either contractors, developers, or those who might be looking for employees to different types of events. There's nothing that precludes you guys from being able to do that. I just, this committee is not charged with doing that as a, as a part of. My charge from my president was to just have people come together and give me ideals that we could put into a framework to be presented back. But the ideal of if you know an event in a church or a convention, the Puerto Rican parade or down the river, from wherever it is, and you and other people that are part of this committee want to commit time and effort and resources to doing something, I'll be happy, try to marry you with the resources you need to be able to do it. And you can do it. I just, you know, but I just want to be clear that, you know, what our intention was here. And it sounds kind of broad. Actually, there's two or three different committees. And I've been told that we're probably the most on point of all of them because they've got groups of people and everybody kind of has an ideal and wants to just go out and do something. And there's one on, there's supposed to be one on internet, there's another one on quality of life. And I believe there's one on economic investment related to entertainment, not entertainment, but the marketing of part of Springfield for the businesses, downtown restaurants and entertainment and stuff like that. So I just don't want to, I don't want to dampen anybody's ideal in terms of the, the marketing is right. There's eagerness, it seems like to get something tangible moving and doing. Please do so. If I could help by, you know, relaying the information to somebody in the administration, somebody in the department head, or even the president of the council, happy to do that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, there's clarity of that to that point. Does that sound right?
Yes. We can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Now.
Just remember that's the mic and the camera.
Oh, sounds strange.
So yeah, you're talking to us, but you're talking.
Like an Alexa.
Exactly. The bigger version.
So yes, my name is Claudia Quintero. And so what I was thinking about is, I have, so my sister, she lives in Minnesota and she works on a reservation. One of the really cool things that they're doing there is they're using green energy, particularly solar energy to bring work to the community. And part of what they're doing is they're leveraging like federal monies to try to create jobs for people to be solar panel installers. And so I had somebody come to my house and they were like, you know, here's this program for solar panel installation. And all of the people who were involved in, or who are involved in the process are not from Springfield. Like their installers are from somewhere in Eastern Mass. The company itself is, I think, like a national company. And him, like the salesperson, he's from like, like somewhere in central Massachusetts. And so it would be nice, like there is a big demand or a need for solar panel installation. Like people want to invest in that sort of energy. But it would be great if we could have people like trained here in Springfield who could install those panels or who could go out and talk about this kind of energy and like the programs that exist to sort of leverage that new industry that is, that is up and coming in, in the state or just in the region. And one of the things he told me, which I thought was really interesting is that there are a company based from California, but they targeted Massachusetts because of its like pro environmental energy laws as one of the places they really want to expand and grow. So I think Massachusetts is like ripe for that kind of investment. And so I think if we're thinking about like complete ideas, thinking about like, is there some sort of program or some sort of something where we can have people learn to be installers for like part of that infrastructure and stuff? And my sister, she works in like labor and workforce development in Minnesota too. And she was saying that their project is specific to training people how to install this kind of thing in like, not just residential places, but commercial places too, like hospitals and schools and like all these different places. So that's one thing that I thought about when you brought that up, Christine.
So I think, excuse me, Melvin, I was gonna say that is really good. So how do we get these people here trained? What is it gonna cost to do that? If we're put, if this is a plan to put together, because I like that, but like you said, right here, there are places, people don't have the money to say, oh, I need, I'm gonna take these classes at college and I gotta pay for that. Or getting someone to say, let me come out here and do these classes. Let me train. Because you know, right now it's always about the funding and what people have. Yes, they want to learn, but sometimes it's hard to get into these things and they're not even able to pay for that. So how do we move forward with something like that? Then that, I think that is a great idea there, but just making sure that we can, the cut, trainings are covering, having some money there to cover that and figuring out who's paying for those to come out here and train, you know, our members of our community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to add about trainings. And the good thing about Massachusetts is I think they just passed a bill, bill that allows adults to attend community college and technical colleges now for free. I think Moore Haley just passed that not too long ago. So that's a good thing to get people back into the workforce and back to, you know, working. And also I think we identify childcare and transportation as being a big, I guess, thing, because you know, everybody needs childcare and a lot of women cannot work because of childcare. So them going to school at three years old now is definitely gonna be a help for the mothers who had to wait until their kid turned five in order to go to school, so then they can go back to work. And, but even just being us, being knowledgeable about that, like that information is sometimes so hard to even just find. I knew about the adults going back to school for free just by being at a, an event. So marketing, networking is, is a really big component in workforce development because a lot of what Mr. Melvin always says, what you don't, you don't know what you don't know. So a lot of people probably don't know that there's free education out there. Some people probably don't even know that their kids can start school at three years old. So we need to have more, even coming from the city, like if they had on the city website that says new Moore Haley administration just passed a bill that allows adults to go to school for free. I'm sure that will get people's wheels turning as to, well, if I can go to school for free, well, maybe I want to try this industry that I never tried. Maybe I want to go into this thing that I never tried because it's free. Now childcare is at three years old. Well, now I can put my kid in school and, and go to school myself and, you know, try to build myself up to childcare. One of the reasons I started my business is because I didn't have childcare in the middle of COVID. So I had to think fast and what am I gonna do? How am I gonna sustain? I started this, but it's, you know, it's still rough and hard, but one thing that has got me through and is getting me through is marketing myself and networking. And by doing that, I think, you know, I learned so much. I met so many, you know, different people. And I think if we do that on a grand scale, like let the city website be the first website someone goes to say, oh, I found out we can go to, you know, childcare at three, maybe the with, the website could be more accessible so where we can find, like they, we said last week about putting like, they said the work bible. I think somebody used, and I don't take that term, I only just said it. But just one place where everything is, and maybe that could be on the city website also, is just my idea.
Just a point of clarification. So the three-year-olds, can they go to preschool or did they get to start kindergarten if they want to?
It's a full day.
It's a full state.
They're preschool.
Full day.
Full day preschool.
And they're just, they're opening up seventeen new classrooms coming in September.
Yes. And I think every school is like taking a certain amount of kids, so that should help.
Perfect driving.
And it's free.
Yeah, it's free.
It's free for all residents of City Springfield, which is huge. Most communities across the country don't offer this. So it's, it's very beneficial and, I mean, it helps on a lot of different levels because if nothing else, it gives parents, those of us who've never raised multiple kids and had them in close enough age, the women or the men, they need a break, just having school. But it benefits the kids to get them exposed, to get them used to being in school as well. So that it's, it's a win-win all the way around, but it does open up opportunity, opportunities for women. And I don't want to sound sexist by just saying women, because
For parents.
There were plenty of times I had my three hollers, you know, yelling, their moms was gone and, you know, I like the dog better than the kids most days. So we enjoyed my Greg Ellery's here. We, we invoked your name a little while ago because one of the things that had came up was the ideal Tammy started to talk in. I did, I kind of echoed it, the ideal of Vincent are going on.
That's what I heard in person. I was, I was on the call. I'm actually MCUA Green.
I know that was it.
And I felt that my presence was needed for the city of Springfield, Massachusetts as a whole.
I hope y'all can see my face expression. Let's get ready to get deep in here.
Oh, my God.
We do.
They see you up there?
Yeah, it's actually two screens.
Yeah, yeah. The camera's three sixty.
Oh, wow.
Something. They're watching you eat.
Yeah. But now, but to comment on your statement, it's like, yeah, a lot of.
You're all set, right?
Don't wait.
I'm sorry, she was in queue.
Okay.
You just, I just tried to acknowledge that you were here because I didn't know that the, our attendees knew you had showed yourself. So Greg.
Really quick, what I was gonna say is to talk about solar panels and installing that another idea might be perhaps the city could give some sort of discount or come to some sort of way that they could do some marketing for a local-based business that would train local people, you know, just something that the city might going on. Okay, please take it away. Sorry.
Um, I've been listening to your, your, your great, all of your great input. And the word that keeps coming up is marketed. From the, from the last meeting, what I took in the meeting was the retentions of keeping a younger workforce in the city of Springfield not to be moved. So if we market towards that demographic of them for what things that they would like to do and not what we want them to do. So it seems like they want to go into clean energy. They want to get accessible training. They want to get all this stuff. So let's go in that direction.
Okay. Well, to that point, Greg, Lisa Colson is still here. And Lisa and I have been working probably close to a decade. And I, Greg, my wish should don't go back that far, but he's been paying long enough. But one of the things that I just wanted to kind of throw out there was is that when you start talking about how do we get our local people working? Because the ideal was that they're training people to do solar. The volume, I can't speak onto the volume of work that is available where your sisters are related to solar. I have solar panels on my house. They're not, it's hooked up, ready, but waiting for final chef flip of the switch. But it wasn't local guys who did my work either. And one of the things that I believe that Greg and Lisa can talk about is the fact that how difficult it is to get people, the companies who bid on contracts don't necessarily bid and have enough work just to work in Springfield. And I'll use the example, when MGM came, Greg was one of the people who would help work on making sure that women and residents, veterans and minorities were working on the construction of MGM. When there was a belief that Mac here was saying, there was a record number of women working in construction making a livable, I can afford to buy a house wage, building MGM. The problem became when MGM's job was done, their bills, mortgage and need to earn an income still existed. But there wasn't a second MGM in the pipeline to re-put, to for them to move from that job to the next one. And if you came on the job as a iron worker, when the steel was erected, where did you go to work? If you came on there as a mason, when the brickwork was done, where did you go to work? And when we talk about what we're trying to do in, in, in the ideal of Springfield, and even if we're generous enough to recognize that Springfield really, when it comes to workforce, is West Springfield, Agawam, Islam Meadow, Long Meadow, to a certain extent, Chico P, Polio is more regional. The laws don't allow for you to just have Springfield people, but the money and any resources that the city of Springfield puts out can be restricted to people who are residents of the city. And when we train these people, it doesn't necessarily keep them from going to Connecticut. And when I'm like as the chair of the REO, for those of you don't know, the responsible employer ordinance, I monitor and have oversight of all vertical construction in excess of a half a million dollars. So all of the schools in Springfield that have been built over the last decade, I get the weekly certified payrolls and get them, hold them accountable to a certain degree. But there's nothing, there are laws that prevent a company from Connecticut, Rhode Island, or even far away as North Carolina from coming here and bidding on a contract and then bringing a whole crew from those states to do the work. So the financial benefit to the city of Springfield is in most cases, if they're doing that, they are what they call the lowest qualified bidder. And the biggest benefit for us is that we get the work done, but the benefit financially is to dunking donuts in the morning and the liquor store in the night after they've done the work.
Oh, and the toes.
So we need to work on requests for, for proposals.
Yes. Well, the thing is, is I guess, yeah, that's why I just want to kind of jump, yeah, please say something.
No, I don't want to interrupt.
No, I'm just making, I think these are all, you know, this is, this is what we would kind of like to dig into, you know. What I've gotten from this meeting and the meeting from last, the number one thing on our list and, and our goal is to create a list and we're gonna present. Um, and, and our goal is to create a list that we're gonna present back is marketing. And under that headline of marketing is going to be things like, you're gonna tell me, but I assume it's gonna be things like the website. A website, whether it's the city's website, but an easily accessible site or a place where people can get to. We also recognize that everybody in the city, if I believe the latest study was fifty-six percent of the people who live in the city of Springfield. Don't have internet access, and I know at least my, one of the candidates and one, you know, is actually talking about how important that is. Uh, I know that, uh, the, we talked to, we were in the governor's office earlier today. And I know the lieutenant governor was talking about more, or the governor, more money coming down to help address it, I believe Biden even knows something. Those millions of dollars, so much is coming this from Massachusetts to help address that, but we gotta recognize the internet. And a website is, it's gotta be more than just that. Um, so, but marketing from, am I, am I, are we all in agreement that marketing is probably, if we were, you know, you know. You know, we don't, this is the second, third meeting, that we want marketing right at the top of this list? Please, anybody, uh, wanna jump in, please.
Information sharing.
So other marketing would be information sharing, it'd be the website, it'd be. Job fairs, it would be community outreach, it'd be all those things, but it, the headline is that we need to market job opportunities. Better, we also need probably under that marketing, we need to do job creation marketing. So we're looking into recruiting companies or that might appeal to the younger people.
Right, like for example, I'm sorry to cut you off, but then, um, so like, um, Mass Save is partnering with, um. This is no plug for Mass Save, but like, Mass Save is partnering.
They're gonna pay you if you do it, they're not gonna pay you if you do.
So, like you're talking about your sister going into solar, so they have a program where they take people who are eighteen and up. For a three month internship, aid internship, to teach about, um. Uh, legalization and solar and I just got my certificate for wind tunnel energy last week, so like. All that is accessible, it's just not the main marketing, like I, you know me, like I'm no.
Yeah.
So like, I'm gonna go, you should have said no, Greg, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed that class, I'm saying no.
So I, I research, I'm, I'm here, you know what I mean?
But that's, you had to find, you have to go hunt for that information.
Certain people who we want to, for that, of lack of better terms, do better with their lives. Are not there looking for these opportunities.
So what I'm hearing is you should not have to, it should not be that hard to find the information you need to be employed.
Correct, because there's nothing more upsetting than being broke. They're talking about violence and this, that, and there's, because you're broke. So, that's on the start, oh, I, I have more stuff to do, guys, I'm sorry.
Is, is that something that we could perhaps, uh, send around and say this is what was passed around at the meeting so people remotely can see it?
Over to the public, I'll be having a meeting with them tomorrow at twelve to do part two.
Yeah, and Greg, you might have some thoughts on that thing about the reply all, but. I don't think that would be, it's not a discussion, that's just a sharing of information.
Right.
I even, you know, I'm still fighting over. The historic district on State Street and other things with law departments, I haven't got to this one.
Right.
Clarification.
No, baby.
And to reply all thing.
Right.
So I don't think that's a, that constitutes a discussion, that's just a sharing of a document that would be beneficial to people that they can share to other people. So Greg, I'm gonna assume with my scanning that or sending it out electronically to the.
My friends?
Yeah, to the group.
Kind of gonna get it and go for you guys.
Make sure, make sure, Greg, cuz I, I'm be like Melvin hunting you down if I don't get what I need to look at it. And, um, we always think about too, when we're talking about marketing, people are, you, the most thing people are looking at when they go into these particular processes. When I'm doing this, what kind of benefits I have, you know, the health insurance, all these things coming, so when people are out there looking for jobs, it's like. I gotta make sure I'm getting me some, you know, medical, the life insurance, dental, whatever they have, four O may, four O K may be included, but. Um, I know that I have my older that's just like in and out still going on a search, but I was like, make sure. That whatever you do, you better look for those benefits because when your, when your children are twenty-six and older. You, they're not gonna allow them to stay on your parents, so they gotta find their own, so that's what. I know a lot of them in my family and other friends that are looking for is the right job, what, making sure the benefits come for that. So I, I, that's always important, I look at that, um, and I know that the governor has been doing some. Things for, for our members of our community all around because even for us again, as our healthcare workers are in contract negotiations. Fighting for higher wages because there again, there's the marketing and there's the programs, what comes with it. And why should I stay, I hear this all the time, why should I stay in this job if I'm not getting this, I'm not getting that, so benefits matter. Right now because everything is hot.
Yeah, we could, just to, to build off what you just said. I'm guessing, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna say I'm special or old school, but one of the things that I was told as a child when I went to work for. Anything. Was any job better than no job, but what I just heard you talk about was the fact that, you know, they need to be looking for benefits. Benefits generally in the volume of, or the value of the quality of the benefits you get are usually tied to. What your wages, but it's also tied to your skill set that you bring to the table. So the benefits and wages you get are, as a DNA will not equate to the same benefits you get if you're in our head. Am I correct? So the thing is. I know, um, my background before I became a city councilor many, many years ago, aside from selling cars. Was I was, it was a retail manager and I was a manager for Ames Department Store, I was a manager for Toys R Us. Uh, across Massachusetts and Connecticut, um, quite often, people's eyes are bigger than their skill set. So, you know, I, I remember, I could hire a janitor, and this is of course thirty years ago, but I could hire a janitor on Boston Road in Springfield. For seven fifty, eight dollars an hour, went to West Hartford and couldn't buy a rent, I couldn't hire a janitor for fifteen dollars. And that was thirty years ago, and, um, all they need to maintain, you know, just, just routine maintenance. Um, the market dictated when I sold cars and C and C suit. What I sold a Subaru for Holyoke was different, what they saw one international on the side of infield, once you cross that Connecticut line. How do I marry those two things and is it realistic, um, to expect that you're getting either high wages? Or really good benefits unless you bring something to the table that justifies the whoever pays you. Investment in you. Is that a fantasy or is that, is that, can these two things come together and work together?
They actually can, um, we're in that process now of working, so of course wages is always number one. Cause we're looking at what, this would have got to be paid, you know, the rents, depending on where people live, so wages is al- always number one. The people are like, and this is what I'm hearing from members of our community, different people that I'm talking to, is like, yes, I want higher wages, but I need benefits. Cause is this job gonna provide these things for me, if I get hurt on the job, who's gonna cover me? So it's just like, when we're talking about what we wanna do and bring back to the team, I wanna hear what members of my community are talking about. Cause maybe it's something that I can share with all of you, um, I spend a lot of time knocking on doors, so you know. It's, it's, it's a little hard, it's a little tight out here, but people are sharing what, what really matters to them. Um, and I hear wages, I, I want a good job so I can have those good wages, I can pay my bills, but I definitely need to be covered by health insurance. Cause just from an experience from myself years ago, Melvin, when I'm telling you to over thirty years. I worked on tobacco, so I know what it was like to get out there, I worked on tobacco, but what happened was. I had a severe asthma attack and I didn't have no health insurance. And I'll tell you, they put me in that hospital, they gave me enough to breathe and they kicked me right out, you know, so that made me think differently. Of what I'm looking for in the workforce as I grew and I got myself better, so this is why I always say that to my kids. Because I want, yes, we all wanna be covered, yes, they want a good job, there are jobs here and like we all said, people don't see it, because people don't look. You know, or they don't know where to look, so I like the idea of like posting it in a special place so they can have that. When they get hired, take the job and hire from the company, sit down, I always say, sit down with the boss of the company and talk about. Okay, you're talking about your way, talk about what those benefits are for you, but don't, you know, don't deny yourself a good job because, okay, they don't have good benefits. You could start, we, we all did it, we started small and we moved forward, didn't we not?
Yes, definitely, I guess that you, you're getting the nail on the head where I was going, isn't it?
Right.
Too, but I only lasted two days.
We lost you, Melvin, can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I haven't touched anything.
Okay, there you go, I can hear you now, okay, I'm gonna shut up so you can talk.
Okay, I'm just saying this, like, but my introduction to retail management was Ames was building a new store at Agawam. I got hired as temporary help, showed up every day, made minimum wage, showed up every day. When the store got ready to open, two weeks before it opened, everybody who came to work every day and missed no time was asked, do you want a regular job? I got a regular job, three months later, I was joining their management training program and moved to Islam Meadow. So the thing is, is I started off with a minimum wage job and I won't tell you my motivation for getting the job because it wasn't legal then. But I got the job, but I worked, but that's the point, sometimes the ideal that we all want benefits, I think. I can't solve, I don't know if we can solve the problem with the fact that, you know, the benefits don't mirror what we think we need and have. Especially when it comes to something like healthcare, but I think it's better than it was thirty years ago because of mass health and other different programs that exist. But I think what you're saying is legitimate and, but at the same time, I would never encourage anybody not to take any job. Unless it's something detrimental to your health, because I never had a job that I started at, at one level and left at that same level. I always ended up leaving, earning more than I did when I started or with a better title than I started. Go ahead, Greg.
My question for you, Miss Tammy, is are you saying that the benefits are being explained to the employee?
Some of them, yes, so Greg, what I'm hearing when I'm out here in my business world, some people are, don't understand the benefits. And I say to them, it's very important when you go apply for a job, you have that conversation. Um, and to find out what it is, so if I say, okay, you're gonna start for eighteen dollars an hour, you know, they're gonna ask, okay, what do I have for health insurance? What, what kind of benefits you have, so some places are not explaining to people, so they're just sharing to me how they're feeling, so I'm trying to redirect them to just like. Listen, this is you, if it's something that you really wanna do, you have the conversation, you may be. At a, you know, we all go on probation for a certain amount of time for our job, because I just got a higher position, so I went, I just got off my six month probation, so. It depends on where they go, but you gotta love what you're gonna do, and that said, you gotta, if you're gonna put your heart and soul into it, just find out, just have the conversation. Don't push something in a way that you wanna start doing because the benefits didn't start right away, because they'll eventually come in. But, you know, and you'll have a, we'll always have sick time when we, where we go, we're always gonna have sick time, but just start, you know, start there, and like you said, Melvin. Don't walk away, you, you know, give yourself a chance, give yourself an opportunity to grow, because I did it for myself.
So that sounds like a social war situation, is that something that they label it for? Yeah, so it's just part of the packet of where, where we count, that, you know, that sounds like a part of the counseling that should be played.
I think that might be a good segment for perhaps high schools to have and preparing people upon, you know. What it's like to get an income, what it's like to get insurance, so many people don't seem to know that they need to get a copy of their. Auto policy cover page to know what they've got, simple things.
Natural literacy.
Under, right, uh, right, knowing, knowing, uh, uh, how to run a household, but all the things that you need to pay for. Um, and not just rent, and I, 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 I don't know what's happened, but I, I think, um. I know when I was growing up, like, parents would teach those things, but I, I see lots of people, uh, today. You know, going through school, I remember there were some interns I had back in the nineteen nineties, it seemed like the late nineties. When this all started, that people were just sort of going along with, so the childhood, nobody was figuring these things out. That most of us knew before we graduated from high school and, uh. When I'm hearing, uh, with Tammy talk, I'm thinking perhaps there should be some, you know, certificate that, uh, seniors. Or, you know, work on getting, uh, and, and, you know, what would it be called, I don't know, uh, uh, it seems to me like it's, uh. You know, uh, home ec- home economics finances.
Well, when I was in high school, they, we did a class called life school, where they would teach you how to like balance a checkbook and. You know, all the credit cards and stuff, um, but actually, oh, it was in Los Angeles, California. Um, but I kinda wanted to. Sort of switch gears a little bit, if I may, um, I know, because thinking about like proposals, right? Uh, one of the questions I wanted to ask was, we have that, um, the Eastfield Mall that is being redeveloped. I believe it's like, cause I was reading about it in the news recently, right? In July, right?
It's, it's closed at thirty.
Yeah, yeah. So my question to that is, as a proposal, how do we leverage that project for the benefit of. The residents in workforce development, like what can we think about that? Can use that already existing potential project to, or like bring workforce development to the residents? So that they can benefit from it. Greg?
Okay, I might know, um, in my opinion, I think just like Melvin said earlier, following rights and times, but it's just like a.
It's just like a broken clock, right?
Yeah. It's like an MDM thing.
We're losing you, I can't hear you no more.
Call now, hear me now?
Okay, that's better.
Okay, oh, yeah, um, I, it's, it's the simplest, going to the REO and making sure whoever gets that bid. Has to hire local residency, but the big thing about construction is we have to be trained. The reason why you don't see a lot of construction workers with jobs, because they're not good. So like all the good ones have jobs, they're nurses, they're doctors, they have patients, so it's that, so it's, first of all, we gotta get those guys. To, to, to work on that, and they may not be seeing their skills, you just can't, it's, uh. Four, eleven people from off the street into a position.
I also had, um, something to piggyback off what you said, what you both were saying. What if we put like all the big projects that are going on also on a site or somewhere we can find them? Because we definitely, um, the Soldier's Home is being rebuilt in the real, um, there's a lot of infrastructure and roads being worked on and, and.
They're gonna rebuild the Springfield Fort House.
Absolutely, like, why wouldn't we be able to get all the big projects that are going on instead of them staying at the. Levels that they're on, maybe we should know about them too, and somebody's trying to find out in the news, like, there could be opportunities with. You know, the Eastwood Mall or the Soldier's Home, it could be, you know, more opportunities than we know if we knew about it. So now that we know that the Eastwood Mall is coming with the Soldier's Home and Holyoke, people are getting trained to go into those jobs and stuff like that. Like, if they don't know these jobs are going on, because that could take a year or more. So yes, they are employed for a year, but then they can say, oh, this just gonna, and this is starting, so they're already getting their mind around. Okay, this is a year, but this is going on, I might not getting, get in in the beginning, but maybe I can fit some in. So if we, it was a continual, like, I guess, list, that this is never gonna stop, it's gonna always be something to be constructed, something to be torn down. Something to be rebuilt, so why can't we get that information as people who live in the city of what big projects are going on? We have the East West Rail project going on, people can get like, and that's something people, tangible for people to start. Training now and by the time it's actually ready to be, you know, constructed, they'll be trained.
See, there's a good thing about that, it's like, I'm excited, that thing right there is. It's like, we should put these volunteers and employees, hey, so, um, you guys are building, building another project? What do you mean, what, what time do we start, can you pay for training, that's why MDM is helping the community out a lot. Because then, under the mic, these guys can come in and put their back on and get back to Washington, get back to one number, and then. Then you keep building, and that's true, then you keep pushing forward to the things that.
We gotta hold them accountable.
Yeah, but the leverage for MGM was is that, see, the thing is, he, well, first of all, nobody gets hired to do the complete job. So the thing is, is, matter of fact, this kind of ties into, I was wondering to where, is, is there a role for unions in what we're talking about? Because the apprentice programs in the. Because the apprentice programs in the unions is what trains you to do certain things. You don't walk off the street in, at MGM and start paying walks. You don't walk in off the street and start laying concrete, cement, steel, electrical, plumbing. These are all jobs that are really good paid jobs, but you have to bring a skill set to the table. And you mentioned Eastfield Mall. Eastfield Mall is not a public project. That's somebody's private money and they're making it. calculation, how much money they gotta spend to build this, tear it down, build something new and collect enough rent from whatever they build. In order to satisfy their investment back into their pockets. If you're talking about something the city is doing, then cities money is public money. We have more leverage. So for example, Greg was in Rome a couple few weeks ago, uh. Davenport, people who did the wireless building, private investment, they wanna acquire a building. They buy a building, they need money from the state in order to fund their project. Gives us some leverage for me to say, well, I need you to hire local people. But the process on the federal labor laws is that they are, they're not obligated to hire the lowest. Competent bidder. That only applies to public. If it's private, then they can hire whoever they want. And they generally will hire whoever they are. To return on their investment, it always has to be financial. But everybody wants the job done well. Nobody wants to hire electrician that really doesn't know black wire and red one. So it's always a little bit more complicated than that. When we were talking about the MGM, the leverage for MGM was is because. They were, as a part of, they were bidding against other casino companies. And we were going to give the bid, and somebody said, I'm gonna bring an entire workforce to Nevada. Which they could easily done Vegas to build a casino, because y'all got experience, you know, I built a casino. It would eliminate our experience, so they actually worked with the, the, the building trades. And put in, I believe this to, to, um, part of labor agreements. They created labor agreements. That the ironworkers, the masons, the painters, electrical workers could all work through them. So I think there's a role for unions because the best training that you can get in construction. In Massachusetts is, is to be affiliated with a union. One of those construction unions. Where else can you get private construction set from it? You get a little bit at high school, depending if you go to the right high school.
You're correct. What I'm saying is all the union training, the majority of.
Well, that's.
Are, are not.
Are not. Yes, and actually, that's one of the things that, you know, a lot of the, yeah, they, like, uh. Maybe, maybe part of that, you know, well, the thing is, our conversations about Springfield, most of our unions, they may have a local. This is Springfield local, but their affiliation is statewide. It's like saying with SEIU. They're a local, uh, she's representing the local, but SEIU is a national union. Well-respected union and the bulk of their membership is not Springfield, but they're trying to figure out how to get people locally in our community working. So, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there to, not Davenport anything, but just give some thought or.
So I have to jump in as well, just on construction, that um when it's done union, it's got the benefits with it. In addition to the free training for workers and being trained while they work. Um, but Tammy earlier was talking about the importance of jobs with benefits and that's a component of it. And um, you know, and as, you know, you know counselor and as Greg knows, you know, the work that we all have done. With the responsible employer ordinance is ensure that there's, on these big jobs, that there are um. Where there's public funds, that there are local hiring components. So the contractors have to hire local workers um as a component of it. And have to have people of color be a percentage of the workforce and women be a percentage of the workforce as well.
You know, it's Chris Agnew again. This reminds me of the city of Portland, Washington. They decided that they wanted everybody who built anything in the city to have to use one percent of the. Uh, construction fee toward art on the building. And that was something that they did, the city did, they made this law. And maybe that's something that we could, you know, just akin to this, that we could say to the Springfield City Council. Maybe consider uh promulgating some sort of city regulation that says people who build a project. That's gonna be at this amount of money and over, need to have provisions for X percentage of the workers being local workers.
We do. That's what the responsible employer ordinance is, is that it already exists. So it has thirty-five percent residency.
Yeah, but see, the, the REO only is, only applies to the, those projects that are certain projects to. Get public money, so it wouldn't actually apply to like, for example. Only needed, the, the C, Eastfield Mall needed a result change of salary. And they needed change uh special permitting, granting of permitting and a result of something to do with the overlay district or, or something to that nature. But it's not, they're not, they're not playing, applying for an HDF. They're not applying for a TIF. Uh, HDF is a historic tax credit and a, and a TIF is just a tax deferment. So it's, they're not losing public money. They're at, they're, the legalese of their need for government is the government's permission. To change the laws or allow for the construction. If you, you can't build something so many high without triggering a review. You can't build anything too large without a public review. And those reviews make sure that you're, you know, they measure the impact on the community. But they don't measure the employment part.
So I, yeah, I was just merely proposing that the city might wanna consider uh making it a requirement that. You know, these private developers, if they're not using any public money, still have to uh consider. Uh, local workers, a percentage of local workers.
That's something, yeah, that's one of those lead ideals that might be have value, but I can just imagine.
I'm going to.
Yeah, made a lot of harm and don't get a lot.
I'll be with you there, Greg.
Yeah, yeah, and we haven't had any lawyer to show up yet, so you, you wanna see some lawyers? I can see them coming up on this one. But it's not, yeah, well, I mean, and, and what Lisa was saying is. The REO does that, because it's probably money, but she can also attest to how difficult it is. Because for example, Union Station, we had no, uh, we put ten million dollars, I believe, or even sixty million dollars, some. Some outrageous amount of money that was city money, but because it was federal money and, oops, sorry. But because it was federal money put into it, the REO, we didn't have any oversight of it. We've had to fight, as I said, I have, or my committee, that Lisa attends regularly. Has oversight of vertical construction and access of a half a million dollars. You can do a lot of construction for less than a half a million dollars that I have no oversight of. It does, one of the biggest money generators in the city of Springfield is road improvements. Paving roads and putting in sidewalks and curbs. That's vertical construction. I have no oversight of that either. So they'll build a school and then I have oversight, because you can't build a school for, for a million dollars.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir. I haven't done that one. Go ahead, boy. Um, how do we get these unions to do their trainings more in Springfield, Massachusetts? Because if I wanted to be an electrician or something or uh an hydra or whatever. Have to go to Taunton or have to go to Boston or somewhere out there on the east coast of Massachusetts. Where, where that, that's the main thing. Like, if I'm looking for a job, I'm broken, I ain't got no car. How am I gonna get two hours away to go take an exam? Like, I think that, a, a lot of that should be coming back to the city.
Lisa, can you, can you touch on that? Is there a way for, I mean, I can, I can just imagine that the reason that they're in Taunton or they're in Boston. Or they're in the eastern part of the state, just because that's what the majority of the population is, and they're trying to serve the entire group. What could the city of Springfield, or maybe it's a regional approach that would benefit Chicopee, Hollyoake, West Springfield, Agloam. All of Western Massachusetts that have, what could the city in your mind or vision, the city could do to draw? Uh, uh, that type of, you know, I guess it wouldn't work for every union, because every union's membership. Is dependent on the number is different. Could you speak on that, Lisa? Or am I, am I putting you on the spot by asking that question of you? As my union rep, uh, expert kind of thing?
Did she get caught by the star?
Lisa, I see her there. She's next to all of them.
She might have stepped away for a second too, because remember she said, said she was having childcare issues?
Can I just share quickly while we're waiting for Lisa? I'll share how we do ours at our union. No, Melvin's, I can't hear nothing. Cause we're about to get off.
But go ahead, um, please.
I wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure Lisa had the opportunity, but I'll tell you, just what Greg said. Our healthcare workers are going through the same, um, you know, here the childcare. So we've been offering training, providing training. Um, in our office now at twenty Maple Street, but one of the things that's happening to our members. Is that they are remodeling the parking lot, so they said it's gonna take six weeks, six months. And so getting parking for them to come out to get their training is absolutely crazy. We're trying to go off remote and do in persons. But downtown Springfield, as you know, Melvin, now you can't find parking. They're sending people to MGM, the park. Um, we have asked permission for our members to park at um the Springfield Library. They said no. So now there's so much problems with the parking that, again, trying to keep it here, just like especially that our surrounding workers can come right into Springfield. And do their training, is the parking is now throwing that off. And so it's just been a hot mess out here. Um, these last couple of weeks, and so that's what we're dealing with, but I hope they find somebody and it would be great. If they can take members of our community when they're remodeling that parking lot. To get members of our community to join it, because they're still waiting for a permit and finding out who's gonna remodel it. But in the meantime, people that are coming for training can't even find a decent parking, or they're getting ticketed, or meters are not working. So we've been dealing with a lot of that right now.
As you go, then I'm just gonna make a suggestion that maybe somebody like, uh, you might wanna reach out to like Peter Silver at, uh. The tech, the stick technology part, he's the executive director of Hope CDC. They have, uh, they have conference rooms and space available that may be able to be, you know, allowable for your membership. I don't know if it's a big deal to move equipment over there, but they certainly have plenty of parking and they pride, they may have available space, but. To, she just may have to move resource, move the program somewhere else where it's more convenient, just in a, in an interim. You wanted to.
In terms of getting uh union training uh to this area, I just thought that it might be who've. Um, the city council to get together with the state representatives and talk to the state and see if they could. Some, provide some incentives for the union to offer something out this way, looking at Hampton County as the. The poorest county in Massachusetts, you know, it, it, it's a, a matter of, of. Just economic justice to, should put these things uh out where they're accessible. Um, especially as the transportation isn't there. Uh, that would be just a way that, that cries out to me. I mean. We've got such a strong, um, a strong uh, uh, argument for getting state help. Um, you know, having spent my adult life in Cambridge, when they have these things like this, they have a, a little pocket of a neighborhood that's having trouble. And you know, they cry about it and you know, people weep and, and, and you know, they wring their hands. And all of a sudden, the state finds ways to do things. And I think Springfield needs to get some morning group together and, and get. Get, uh, get somebody's ear in, in Boston. Thank you.
We've got, I got, I'm gonna give you guys six more minutes. We started a few minutes late and Greg, of course, was like getting to the table. So six oh nine, I'm gonna try to wrap up to six fifteen. Uh, Lisa, you're, are you back with us again?
I am, sorry about that.
Did you at least able to hear what we were discussing or what I had suggested about, you know, uh Greg had talked about in terms of the unions? Uh, I had mentioned about unions, the value of union training being, you know, above anything we can get locally. But Greg's response was that the training is not local. And I was asking, is there. Is maybe we, is there a way for the city or, or maybe as she suggests on a state level, to incentivize some of the training? So that it's more local?
Uh, it depends on the union and whether it's local or not. So like um plumbers' union, the training is in Hollyoake, IBW. It's in Springfield. Um, carpenters and laborers are farther away. We're in Millbury and laborers are in Hopkinton. But most of, most of the training is on the job. It's on the job site. Um, for us, for example, our apprentices work for three months, getting trained on the job site. And then they go for a week for training um in Millbury. Um, and they do have to have cars or access to a car anyways, because their job sites change. They might be with a contractor for a month in Springfield, and then the contractor says, I've got the next job is over in, in Greenfield. And so they have to be able to get from Springfield to Greenfield. Um, so we, you know, we, we did have some members. And when MGM was being built, who were able to get started working locally, because you start working for us to before. Train on the job before you go for formal training. Um, who were able to save up the money then from earning those wages to be able to have the transportation for training. But our, it's one training center for the entire state, and so that's why it's in the middle of the state for us. Um, the resources that it takes to have the huge facility to be able to train them on the equipment and, and all of that. We just, we haven't been able to do it locally. We do do some of the trainings locally, ones that don't require that kind of equipment, like. You know, safety training, some of the hospital, um, uh, um infectious control training. We do some of those out of our Springfield Hall, but most of it is in Millbury for us.
Where? Anybody, did you kind of jump in there or, I'm not gonna ask you, but uh, did we, uh? Yeah, did it hurt your feelings?
No, this is um, all the clean energy company that are in the state of Massachusetts.
All right, be, to be kind of frank, uh, I, I'm hopeful that I have marketing as. You know, it took us a little while, but I think I got at least one good thing and, you know, we may wanna tweak it a little bit, but. I got marketing on there as being huge. And I'm hopeful that when we do come back, we're getting into the summer months as well. I know it's gonna be hard getting people to show up, because some of you people take vacations. Some of us have dogs and cats that we don't take, we actually can't vacate, because the animals will lose their mind. Take the dogs. And they don't worry about the cats. They mad, and you know. Actually, yeah, okay, yeah, I, actually, I'd like to get a camper and everything in it. But I really do appreciate all you, you know, your ideals and your thoughts, and I hope you don't, that you appreciate that. That I walk away from here smarter every time we come together and have one of these things. I really appreciate this. Sean will put together, uh, he'll watch this, he'll create a memo. I would appreciate if you wouldn't mind doing one of these. Cause I like to keep this together with my notes and the sheet I got from home at the end of the month. Cause at some time, probably around October, November, we wanna take and have one formal document. And right now, like I said, I think marketing is gonna be one of those upsets, you know, um, and then maybe, you know, we, we'll have a few little. Bullet points under it, but the next meeting, I'm hopeful that we, we, we can get another one of those things. And, and if we, if we brought back four concrete ideals at the end of the year, we've done our job. And we had ten, we've done our job. There's no numerical number of what we need to present. The ideal is first. Is to get you feeling that government is working for you and that you're being welcomed to the table to try to make those of us who you elect. Uh, more, not just accountable, not really accountable. That's the ballot box that makes us accountable. When I do a good job, you don't vote for us. But it's the ideal that we're trying, some of us are really are trying to listen to you. And not act like we're the only smart people, because you put a title in front of your name. Um, I used to be on the other side before I had Counselor Edwards. And I thought the really smart people ran the city. Now that I'm on the other side of the curtain, I know that that's not necessarily true anymore. Far from true.
So we're looking at marketing. Should we all be considering who we're marketing to and how to market for the next session?
It's whatever you think you need to do, uh, whatever your ideals are. That's, that's the thing, is this is your committee, uh, your meeting. I'm just here to help facilitate. I'm trying to throw off things just to kind of spark, spark conversation. But I'm hopeful that you bring to your table, you know what your charge is, that you're thinking about chewing on it and. I wouldn't do the reply all, because that seems to freak out the law department. But there's nothing that keeps you and two or any two people from having a conversation or writing an email to each other. The only times it gets into trouble, I think, is when we put it out under our umbrella organization. Then it's like, you know, same thing like with the meeting, we have to give them forty-eight hours or three days, or so many hours. Ahead of time to publicize the meeting, so somebody doesn't think we've got some type of secret cabal that's coming together and we're doing something. Um, illegal and we're conniving, the overtake, overtake the mayor's office and, you know, change the way he operates the city. This is not a. But thank you very much, everybody. And for those of you uh who've taken the time to uh. Jump on your computers and be with us, um, my sincere gratitude to you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And for you guys, it's, you know, they came out in the rain. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Be safe out there as you travel, don't get soaking wet and watch out for the thunder and lightning and you all have a wonderful evening.
All this shit, don't, don't worry about. All right, thanks, everyone.